Good afternoon and welcome to the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority for June 2, 2015. May we have the roll call for the council?
Council members Devine?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Garpetian?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Aaron Najarian?
Here.
May we have a roll call for Glendale Housing Authority?
Authority members Devine?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Vincy?
Here.
Brazian?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Chair Garpetian?
Here.
May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the June 2, 2015, joint public meeting of the city council and housing authority was postponed Friday, May 29, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you.
Item for you today is director of community development regarding discussion of developing housing authority-owned property at Fifth Street and Sonora Avenue. One A is council motion directing staff to discontinue analyzing the feasibility of a city purchase. B is authority motion directing staff to initiate development. Second item is director of community development and finance regarding fiscal year 2015/16 Glendale Housing Authority budget. Two A is council resolution making findings for administrative expenses and expenditures outside redevelopment project areas. B is authority resolution adopting Glendale Housing Authority budget for fiscal year 2015/16.
Thank you. Mr. Choah?
Yes, sir. We have for you a rather interesting item this afternoon in advance of the budget that really hopefully sets the stage for the next iteration of the use of Fifth and Sonora. This is a piece of property that was acquired in '08, and as recently as 2014, end of 2014, council had looked in consideration of possibly developing another adjacent property of turning this particular piece of property that's owned by the housing authority into a public park. As that project opportunity fell away in favor of another more traditional apartment building that will be built on the so-called former Bob's Big Boy site, at this point we are returning or asking that we return to the original concept which would be affordable housing at the Fifth and Sonora site. So there will be a couple of actions that we are requesting, one in which is to cease trying to develop or explore developing a park site at Fifth and Sonora, and instead give us your design parameters, your design vision of what you would like to see by way of affordable housing as the original intention at Fifth and Sonora for an RFP process that would commence this summer and be in place by the fall. So with that, let me bring up Phil Landsafame and Peter Zovak and Mike Fortney and the three-headed monster that is our housing team will give you a presentation.
Thank you, Scott. Good afternoon, City Council and Housing Authority Chair Garpetian and Mayor Najarian. I'm Mike Fortney, the housing product manager. Can we get the PowerPoint? This is the Fifth Street and Sonora Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Clicker. Okay. Okay. Scott already went through these, but just quickly, we're looking for the city council to direct staff to discontinue analyzing the feasibility of the city acquiring the property from the housing authority for a park development. And then we're also looking for a housing authority to provide staff with parameters for an affordable housing project for the site. And then finally authorize staff to solicit development proposals through a RFP process. To give you some background, the housing authority acquired the site almost seven years ago, back in August of 2008, $6 million. We used low mod funds to acquire that site. Staff previously analyzed an option to the city to acquire the site for park development. It was about three years ago, if I recall, in 2012. We did look at that, parks looked at it as well, but at that time parks, the city simply didn't have the money to acquire it. We were then directed by the city council to go ahead just recently and look at the site and the feasibility of parks acquiring it for a park development. And in that one, we're still recommending against it and for a different reason. What we did was we looked at all the other potential affordable housing sites, you know, the money that we would have gotten from parks, the roughly $6 million. What we could have done as the housing authority to do affordable housing projects aside from at Fifth and Sonora, and really we couldn't find any better options. So that's the reason this time that staff's recommending against selling it to the parks. Talk about the product site. It's 1412 through 1422 Fifth Street and a single-family home on 1116 Sonora Avenue. In total, it's 67,740 square feet, so just a little bit bigger than an acre and a half. It consists of a total of nine parcels, eight of which are zoned residential and one is zoned commercial. It's mostly vacant with the exception of four bungalows and that single-family home on 1116 Sonora. Zoning would allow 39 units, and the density bonus allows 56 units by right. I believe there is an error in the staff report. I believe the staff report says zoning would allow 35 or 36 units, so I apologize to you for that. It's actually 39. So this is an aerial of the site there. You can see it outlined in yellow, and you can see that it is mostly undeveloped with the exception of the four bungalows, the single-family home over on Sonora. Is this a pointer too or no?
The pointer doesn't... You have to use the arrow.
Oh, oops. Can I get back? No.
The mat's finished.
Can you also get me back? We're going forward. Yeah.
Yeah.
Ruined it. My apologies to you.
Peace, Scott.
I should have come over for lessons on the pointer.
We have a new pointer.
Can we just start it? Start it over again?
I don't believe the red dot shows up on that screen, so you've got to use the arrow as you move it around like a cursor.
Okay. My apologies for the delay.
There it is.
Okay. I'm afraid to point at this point. Sorry. You can see Fifth Street is up towards the top of the photo line, then on the left side that is Sonora. And you can see down towards the end, that's Glen Oaks Boulevard, 1407 Glen Oaks Boulevard, which Mr. Cho had mentioned is right there, Bob's Big Boy, the previous Bob's Big Boy site. What happened? Oh, look.
There.
Doesn't show on the screen.
Okay. And this is another aerial of the site. You can see it's still outlined in yellow, although a little bit more faint, and it gives you an idea of what is around the site. There, it's a mix of single-family homes and multifamily residential. It's kind of, you've got the predominantly commercial corridor on Glen Oaks, and then you have basically two blocks of a mix of multifamily, single-family homes, and then further north you have the predominantly single-family homes. Well, we did a site survey, a neighborhood survey sometime back, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the density out there. So this is a list of 10 properties that are on Fifth Street, with the exception of the one on Glen Oaks, really close to the property. And you can see the number of units there. We did, we did, or I took a look at what the density of those projects are. The first one, that's 63 units, that's sitting on an acre of land, so that's roughly 63 units to the acre. The 10-unit project, three stories tall, that's approximately 35 units to the acre. The next one over 14, that's 49 units to the acre, so without going through every one of them. It ranges from as little as 24 units to the acre all the way up to 63 units to the acre. And then there's photographs of the multifamily buildings. Number one is the larger, that's the 63 unit on one acre. And these are on the same side of the street as our site. This is a picture, number 10, this is actually the Extended Stay Hotel on Glen Oaks, so it's not technically a residential project, but it's 86 units, it's 65 units to the acre if you treat it each unit as a residential unit. They're actually average about 500 square feet, so I thought it was interesting to show you just because a senior, if you went like with an all-senior project, probably wouldn't be much larger, depending on how many units you chose.
Sorry, but how many acres is that? One acre?
That's sitting on roughly, no, it's 86 units, 65 units to the acre, so it's actually larger than an acre.
Okay.
But you can, oh wait, let me, so you can see it there also. I'm going to scroll back for a moment, and you can see it down on Glen Oaks to the right of the Bob's Big Boy, so you can get a good idea of what 86 units and 500 units looks like. Yes. Whoever did that, thank you. Okay. Okay. So in looking to the housing authority board for some direction as far as the development of the site, things that staff thought of were density and population, product type, design, amenities, and then I wanted to talk, of course, about funding available because depending on what type of product we want, we have to go out for leveraged funding. Those funding sources, those outside sources have their own rules, so it all kind of interplays. So talk about density first, and it's in the staff report, but we looked at a variety of different densities. We looked at an 80-unit senior and family mix. We looked at a 56-unit family projects, a 56-unit senior project that was an all-one-bedroom, and then a 35-unit family. And really what we came away from that was you can park any one of those in a single-level subterranean parking structure. And you're looking at, with a 35-unit family or a 56-unit senior, you're looking at two and three-story, and you do have opportunity for some open space, possibly even some public open space. When you get into the 56-unit family, you're still really not, in my opinion at least, you're not really looking at a really, really dense project, but it does, of course, limit you with what you might want to do with the site in terms of providing amenities. And then the 80-unit senior, of course, would be the most dense. That version we looked at, a mix of senior and family. Most of the funding sources out there don't really let you do that, but there are ways to market a project, design it with sufficient number of one-bedrooms and twos and threes, and then the way you market it, you may get seniors filling in those ones to try to get that mix.
I thought that there's a lot of evidence now that mixing seniors and families is much healthier for everybody.
I've read that as well, but at this point, there's still not the funding sources that will allow you to do that, or at least designate, you know, X number of units for seniors and X number of units for families, and I don't know why that is.
What's the best funding source for, what's the best project for best funding sources?
For, as far as funding sources, the 9% tax credit, low-income tax credits have been the best source for us in the last few years. We've gotten almost $100 million in the last eight years through that program.
What would your, how would your funding sources be kind of, if we did a senior and a special needs, would that be a funding issue or not?
We could do one or the other.
One or the other. Can't mix them.
Right.
Okay.
All right. I wanted to show you this, this was, oops, and then I hide it from you. I wanted to show you this, the Doran Gardens project. It was recently constructed. It's a 60-unit project. There was three market rate projects, or market rate units that were rehabbed, and then 57 new construction. All 57 of the new construction are affordable for-sale units to a moderate income. And it gives you an idea, this is a two-acre site, so it's a little bit bigger than the site out at Fifth and Sonora, but if you take out the 16,500 square foot mini-park right there, that's very comparable in terms of size. So you can see what a 60-unit family project would look like on a similar-sized project. Of course, if you went senior, it would be less, less of a footprint. So talking about that, so in terms of population, we could serve seniors, we could serve families, we could serve special needs. The funding source, again, really isn't there for cogenerational, but I think if you did a family project with a number of one-bedrooms, you could market it in such a way to try to get some of those one-bedrooms filled with seniors, but you couldn't designate it that way. And then in terms of product type, there's for-sale and there's rental. In the staff report, I talked about different funding sources, and I talked about one funding source potentially making a for-sale product feasible. I'll get into that a little bit more, but we've, staff's been able to basically do more analysis on that. But I wanted to talk about first what kind of population we've served in the last few years and the product type. So here's a list of projects. The first five are projects that have been approved by the housing authority, Lomita as recently as two weeks ago, and projects during construction. Gardena should be delivered to us this month. It's actually, has this building final already approved. Veterans Village is coming in September, so those projects are coming online. That's a rental family project. That was a 9% tax credit project. Habitat Chestnut and Habitat Lomita, Chestnut's in construction, Lomita was, again, just approved. Those are owner projects. And then the Arts Colony, that was a 9% tax credit rental project. All of those were for families with the exception of Gardena, that's a special needs project.
And there's only one senior?
Only one senior. In fact, you'd have to go back to 2004, the last time we completed an all-senior project. I believe that was Auto Group.
Heritage Park.
Heritage Park, my apologies. So the Cypress Senior Living project, that 18-unit one, that came online actually last year. Aside from that, we've done almost all family. And I have a list that's even more comprehensive that goes back another five years, and all of those projects going back to 2005 are all family projects and special needs projects as well. So we've done a mix of rental, we've done a mix of owner, we've predominantly done family, we've done some special needs and some senior last few years.
Question.
Other things you may want to provide input or direction to staff would be on the design,
whether it be the architectural style, the site layout, open space, energy or water efficiency, and then amenities that the project might provide, such as a public open space or a community garden, community meeting room, you know, any one of those things. Arts Colony is an example, has a 1,500 square foot art gallery as part of the project that would be open to the public. And now we're getting into the leveraging funds. AHSC, that was the one source of funds that can be used for either rental or for-sale. Doing some math, and this program's really new. The first time NOFA was issued on this program was January of this year, and in fact, nobody's been awarded any money yet, so expected to come out in two weeks. But a project could qualify for up to $8 million under this program. And it's, again, it's very new. I've been looking at the numbers, and in the staff report, it stated that with the AHSC funds, a for-sale project could potentially be financially feasible. I think it's, probably would require another $2 to $3, maybe even $4 million from the housing authority, though, to make that feasible. Another problem with the AHSC program, it may not be a problem, but there is a density minimum of 30 units to the acre, so that would require a project of at least 48 units here in order to get those AHSC funds. The VHHP, the money available for that, it could also be rental or for-sale. It is limited to U.S. military veterans and their families, and the funding amount for that is similar to AHSC. So again, I think we're looking at a $2 to $3, maybe even $4 million additional gap or a gap for the housing authority if we went that route. The next one is the affordable housing tax credits. The 9% is competitive, the 4% isn't because it's, it's not even half the money that you would get from a 9%. So you can get that over the counter versus the 9% where you have to apply twice a year. But again, we've been very successful on that project or on the program. We've brought in $95, $96 million through that program in the last few years. It is limited to rental only, though, no for-sale, and you could focus on senior or family or special needs. And then finally, there's the HUD 202 program. That, too, is a rental, that, too, is a senior only, and probably wouldn't require an additional amount from the housing authority.
And to the extent that, you know, to Councilmember Friedman's point as well as Councilmember Devine's point, and if you were looking to move in a direction that would be more focused on for-sale, there's also the option of land banking the property for the time being while you accumulate funds and whatever the state of California ends up doing by way of a replacement for affordable housing funding in the wake of dissolution or redevelopment. We hopefully will start to receive or will continue to receive some funding and can build up such funding such that that would shore up or perform for either mixed generational, mixed-population housing or for-sale housing. So like most of the other options that council housing authority will have on other projects, one of them is to do nothing at this time. Now, that said, there is probably the number one concern that you hear from folks is affordable housing. So you weigh that against the 9% tax credit deal or other affordable housing opportunities as opposed to achieving, if your vision is to do more for-sale housing, you probably are going to need, in all likelihood, to land bank the property for a period of time. But it is possible.
So again, I'm just going to conclude with this, the staff recommendations, again, for the city council to direct staff to discontinue analyzing the site for a park development and to provide staff development parameters, and I'll roll back to those parameters that we were looking for, and then give housing authority staff, authorize us to solicit affordable housing development proposals through an RFP. I'm going to click back again just to kind of go over.
And as Mike gets to that slide, again, the purpose of today is for, is twofold, to cease, take an action to cease looking at this as a park and instead go back to the original vision of affordable housing. And as we put together an RFP that will come back to you, that you would have to bless before we put that out on the street, to help us further define the type of project, if any at this time, that you would like to see. Nothing is, I think, worse, especially at a very sensitive site like this, to not put a lot of parameters out there for the development community, and somebody will spend a good deal of time and resources putting forth a proposal that has no relationship to what the housing authority and council wants to see. So if you do feel comfortable in articulating what that vision is, is it only if you were interested in affordable for-sale, or is rental okay? Is it only special needs, or is it only senior, or is it only family? If you want the mix, you know that that means we're probably going to have to land bank for a little bit of time. But we are looking for that type of direction, as well as, as Mike indicates, the direction on the bulk en masse, you know, is three stories an absolute no-go at this site. You could only go two. If that's the case, then that means that we are going to be looking at certain product types. Based on what you know of the site, and you all know the site very well, we're looking for that type of direction to help put together the RFP that, again, will come back to you once it is blessed to be put out on the street. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions or certainly entertain any direction from the housing authority board and council.
I would like to put my two cents in because I won't be here very long to go through the whole process. I really urge that we have a senior project. It's been a while since we've had one. We had a whole series of senior projects quite a few years ago, but we haven't had lately, and there's a great need for it. That is an excellent area for seniors because you have restaurants all around, there's very good public transportation, lots going on in that area. And the other thing I would urge as far as the design is that if it is a senior project, to make sure it's compatible with seniors, that it's easy, you know, with stairs and all this kind of stuff, that it's, that it's thought, you think of seniors when you're programming it. But I do want to urge senior, if possible.
Thank you. Devine?
I agree wholeheartedly with that concept. We also, I think we have to keep the neighborhood in mind, and I know when we were talking about 1407, Jefferson Elementary School was a huge impact, there would be a huge impact if we had more families and the residents were very concerned about that. And I think if we have senior living here, we would avoid that sort of a problem. Let's see. And I wanted to know about, I have a question about the community room or the garden. Is that going to be based on how much, what the density of the project is, what, which option we decide or if we decide that?
To an extent, yes. The more dense you go, the less, you know, space you have for those kinds of amenities.
And who decides what is, whether it's going to be like a community room or a garden or?
Ultimately, you do.
Do we decide that? Okay. Okay. All right. And then the other reason I like the senior living is the fact that, you know, we would be more eligible for tax credits, correct? And the, and the other, the other funding, the HUD 202. So possibility of more funding in that direction?
No, I couldn't, I can't see that. I will tell you that whether you went family or senior, if you went, we don't have to choose the funding, the developers would choose that, and I'll almost certainly go with the 9% in either scenario. Again, we've been very successfully getting that, so it's in my opinion that whether you go family or you go senior with a 9% tax credit deal, we probably won't have to come out of pocket. The $6 million land contribution is probably all we'll need.
Okay. Great, great. So then what happens if we okay this is then we do the old routine, apply, comply, and compete for all of these? Okay.
Mr. Sinanian? Thank you. Yes, I do agree that we are overdue to have a senior, senior affordable housing building. I like the location very much. Been pushing for that location to be used for affordable housing for the last two years when previously we've had discussions about possibly going after other locations, other properties. One consideration that I had in mind was that we don't want to create, we don't want to relegate all the affordable housing projects to southern, South Glendale because it's just not good. It's not right. We should have any of these projects spread out throughout the city. And north of Glen Oaks is a wonderful location. I live probably two or three blocks away from this very location, and as a resident of that neighborhood, I'll be very happy if there will be a senior building there, and I think it'll be a great contribution to the neighborhood, and at the same time, we will have done the right thing. We'll do a great thing, we'll make life easier for the, that segment of our population that's increasing in size and in numbers and is in most need of help.
Mr. Garpetian?
I agree with my colleagues. I'd like to see a senior project as well. The number of units can be deceiving. Some project could have 60, 70 units that have less, less impact on the neighborhood than 40 units of all three bedrooms, because if there are 40 units, all two bedrooms and three bedrooms, believe me, they will have more cars. So with senior housing project or senior units, it would be less impact on the neighborhood because most of the seniors are active seniors, but they don't drive or they have only one car. And as it was mentioned here, the bus stops are very close, close by, the shopping is very close by, it's an ideal location for senior housing. And my suggestion would be to, couple of questions before I make that suggestion. That Bob's Big, 1407 Glen Oaks, is it two or three stories? The one that they proposed last week? If, I don't know the details on it, that's why I wanted to...
I believe that is three stories.
Three stories.
That's right. It's 55 units.
55 units. So if, if you want to have enough or larger open space, we can start from the back, three stories, and step down to two and have more open space in the front that faces Fifth Street, public open space like a park-like setting, and community room, that house that is on, on Sonora, it could be turned into a community room or what have you. This is something that they can, they can study and come back with ideas. And I think definitely we need to provide some, something for the community as well by building this project. So, and as far as the tax credits go, this is an easier project to finance, and we don't have to put any more money upfront if we have, if we want to build, you know, I'm for providing affordable ownership housing, but if you have to cuff up another $3, $4 million, it would be very difficult for us at this time. We own the land and we had it for seven years. I think it's time for us to move on and build something that there's a demand, and it would be a win-win situation. That's my suggestion, to go as many units as they can. I mean, number of units is, as I said, it could be a little bit deceiving. You can have 60, 70 units of single or one-bedroom for seniors and have less impact on the neighborhood than have 35, 40 units of three bedrooms on the same lot. and have less impact on the neighborhood than have 35, 40 units of three bedrooms on the same lot. So that would be my suggestion, to look into what is the highest and best use, and by providing an open space where we face the Fifth Street.
Sure. As much as I like the idea of mixing family and senior, because I've read quite a bit of research on it, showing that it helps the kids, because they have older people to mentor them, and it helps the seniors, because they've got kids around, they don't feel like they're being warehoused. I understand the implications in terms of financing that it would hurt us. And also, in this neighborhood, this is a neighborhood that's heavily impacted by traffic, because unlike some of the other areas we've looked at for multifamily housing, it's close to Glen Oaks, but you have to go through a residential neighborhood to get there. It's not right on a main drag, like a lot of, like Central and Bran and some of those other areas. So I think having senior housing where they're not driving as much, and they don't have as many cars, makes a lot of sense. I would say that, for me, what I'll be looking for is something that is much more of a park-like setting, that brings greenery to this area, because even though you go a few blocks north, and you're in a neighborhood that has front yards and a lot of greenery, in this particular area, you tend to have a lot of apartment complexes, and they're older apartments, so they go lot line to lot line, and I don't like to see that increased. So I think the more open space and greenery you can do, the better. I'd love to see a community garden component for the residents, because a lot of our seniors do use, you know, the community garden when they can get to them, when they can walk to them, or when they're on their property. I think that would be an amenity they would like, and if they don't, we can always replace it with something else. So I'd love to see us try that. I don't know if we have any affordable housing outside of Habitat that has that. I know one of our Habitat projects has a very small, you know, sort of planter beds for their residents.
We have a senior project, too, and they absolutely love it.
So I'd love to see that as the open space, I think that would be functional for them, as opposed to just a big grassy lawn, you know, they're probably not throwing a lot of frisbees, but they can, they can grow their own fruits and vegetables and flowers.
Didn't our first veterans project also have a garden?
Yes, yes, that's right.
Okay, great. So that would be, those would be my comments.
Okay, and as for me, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brazian?
So I agree with everybody, so that's an ideal area for the, for our seniors. But I'm curious, it says in the neighborhood section, it says the streets and sidewalks are in good condition, with parkways planted with grass and trees. Are we going to keep all of it, or just?
The parkways?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, no, I don't think we would eliminate the parkway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I interest anyone in making this an artist colony? No, big no on that. Because we've done an artist colony, and we've done veterans housing, and we've done family housing, and we've done special needs housing, and we are long overdue for the senior affordable housing. So I am in complete agreement with all my colleagues. Do you want an indication as to how many units we're interested in?
Really, any direction you would provide.
Or is that something that is dealt with in the design process?
You know, I think you could give a ceiling, if you'd like, or a range, if you'd like, but really, we're looking for any input from you.
Or allow it to be governed by design, it's really your call.
Right, well, for the factors that I think Mr. Garbettian and others raised, I do believe that seniors have the lightest impact on the community, especially parking. Some, many seniors drive, but you're not going to find a senior, a typical senior unit with two cars or three cars. So I think that their impact is going to be lightly felt on the community compared to other types. So I'd say let's try for the most, which with SB 1818 puts us to around 80, did you say? Or 56, was that?
Yes, although you can go higher.
Yeah, yeah.
If we have the garden.
And I think the, I think the free market would probably, the developer will try to make the best out of the project by including, balancing the number of units versus the available financing. So I'd like to see what comes up. Clearly, it comes back to us then for final design approval, is that correct?
Yes, it would.
So, so at that point, we can field some of the design issues, bulk, massing, open space issues, setback, community gardens, et cetera. But let's, because the need is just so great out there, I mean, I, Mr. Ochoa said it, and we all, we all feel it. There isn't a day that I can go to the supermarket without having a senior tugging on my arm and saying, "Look, I can't afford the rents, I'm going to be thrown out, what can you do for me?" And it's, it's very heart-wrenching to know that we're not putting these up as quickly as we used to. We used to put up about one a year, when redevelopment was in, was permitted. But I'd very much like to put as much housing as possible on the, to the community.
Okay, if I, oh, I apologize. Ms. Devine?
One more question. The 56 units, you mentioned one-bedroom units, 56, is that the most? Or, you know, if you, with 56, you just do all one-bedrooms? Because I mean, seniors, that's all they need, I believe.
No, we, we studied so many concepts, I picked those four that we kind of focused on, but absolutely not. You could, you could clearly put 56 units of family on that site, so certainly 56 units, senior would be.
So we could do more? Possibly more.
Well, I did a quick calculation, if you do 56 units on $6.1 million land, you're almost $109,000 a unit, land value per door. So it's not a cheap project. So if you do 80 units, then we may, pensay will come down to, I'm not saying do 80, I mean, given the option of, they may come back and say, "We can't fit 80 units, it has to be 70, and it's more feasible, and it's doable." But if, if you reduce the number of units, I think that the land value compared to the units per door, the value per door is, will be very high, and it may not even worth to any of the developers to even look at it. But if you do seniors, they may be one-bedrooms, or some of them two-bedrooms, because there are some seniors that they can't sleep in the same bedroom, they have to have separate bedrooms, because of their medical conditions. So some of them would be two-bedrooms, if I'm not mistaken, but.
They could be.
Yeah, there is a, there is a little ratio that most of them need one-bedrooms, but, and I don't want to build 400-square-foot units. At least it has to be 600, 650 square feet. Whatever is the norm, but I don't want to squeeze these units to have more units, because then quality of life will go away. So, again, our, my, my suggestion is to have, if they can build 80 units, let them study it and say yes or no, and then say.
If I could respond to just a couple of the things that I'd heard. I would say, most likely, you wouldn't want to go less than 40. I don't think anybody would submit anything less than 40 units, just because it doesn't work through a tax credit deal. So you probably will see proposals of 40 units or plus. Peter had reminded me of a slide that was hidden, and with this remote, I fear I probably can't recall. But it speaks to, the comments that you had made, that the senior project wouldn't have the same sort of impact as a family project. What we did is we looked at a number of senior projects built in the, in the city, and the code parking is one, one stall per unit. But in reality, some of these have, for every four units, one car parked in the garage in these current senior structures. So that's something that kind of really shows what you were talking about, as far as how a senior project really doesn't impact as much. The other thing I just want to mention, in terms of the number of units, you're exactly right. But I was, I, I heard you say you don't want 400, 500 square-foot units. If, most likely, a developer on a senior project would come with a 9% proposal, the, the tax credits require no less than, it's either 600 or 650 square feet units, so they wouldn't come in with anything less than that. That's all I can remember.
I will say that the, on parking for seniors, even though not everybody has a car, they have grown children that come to visit from out of, out of the city that do park. So you need to consider that as part of the senior.
Visitors party.
Good point, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we have two items, one is a council motion directing staff to discontinue a pursuit of this for the city as a park, that's 1A. We'd need to take these separately. Is there a second for 1A?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garbettian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Aaron Najarion?
Yes.
And for the housing, I'll move to?
It's 1B.
Oh, I'm sorry, 1B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Authority members Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Mincy?
Yes.
Brazian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Najarion?
Yes.
Chair Garbettian?
Yes.
Okay, the second item, you've already read into the record. This is the, do we need to, do you need to give us any background on that? 2A, which is a council resolution making findings for administrative expenses and expenditures outside of redevelopment project areas.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, that is, I'm sorry, that's just a holdover from redevelopment that will allow us to spend money outside of redevelopment project areas. We typically do that as a belt and suspenders, since the elimination of redevelopment.
Is there a motion for 2A?
There is, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garbettian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarion?
Yes.
And I'll move 2B for housing.
Roll call, please.
Second.
Authority members Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Mincy?
Yes.
Brazian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Najarion?
Yes.
Chair Garbettian?
Yes.
And I will move to adjourn for the Housing Authority.
Second.
Someone for council?
Move, moved.
To adjourn?
To adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay, council's adjourned.
Hey, good afternoon, welcome to June 2nd Glendale Housing Authority Meeting, being called to order at 4:45, maybe have a roll call, please.
3:45.
3:45.
Authority members Devine?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Mincy?
Yeah, here.
Brazian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Here.
Najarion?
Here.
Chair Garbettian?
Here.
What's next, please?
The agenda for June 2nd, 2015, regular meeting of the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Friday, May 29, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
So moved?
Second.
Minutes stand approved, are submitted, what's next, please?
Next item is oral communications, however, no cards were submitted for this portion, Mr. Chair. On the business agenda, at 6A is Director of Community Development regarding affordable housing activities for fiscal year 2015-16. 6A1 is a motion approving a change order to the professional services agreement with Kane Balmer Burkeman in an amount of $30,000 for a new contract total up to $435,000, and extend the contract term for approximately one year to end on June 30, 2016.
Yes, so this is effectively what amounts to the final year before we would go out to a proposal on a new housing council, and certainly, we would hope and expect that Kane Balmer Burkeman would reapply. But as we wind down these final RDA projects, the Art Colony, the Veterans Village, and a couple others, to get us through the remainder, or the coming fiscal year, we're looking for a $30,000 amendment to cover that upcoming year's work for Kane Balmer Burkeman. The idea being that if we are to bring in some.